Around the Father, we bow at the beginning of this council. We give the whole meeting and pray for the citizens of this town. And for the brothers and sisters who are dealing with issues surrounding COVID. And pray that they be blessed to those that are in need and those who are concerned and anxious. And pray that the whole be given out concerning being grateful for this council and for the chance we have to be together and to sit in council. Pray that we'll have the needs and concerns of the citizens of this town and fathers and make decisions and deliver on things. And pray for by a spirit of guidance to do this this time and maybe do this Christ.
Thank you. So let's call this meeting to order. Welcome to channel thirty-two here. Is there anybody on Zoom? They're trying to get it. So any additions to the agenda? All in favor? So Jeff, our delegation, we're just working through. Okay, so let's do adoption of.
Sorry.
No, that's fine. Adoption of the minutes for January the fifth. Any questions, concerns, answers ready?
I'd like permission to adopt the minutes of January fifth, twenty twenty CCW meeting.
All in favor? Thank you. So let's just talk, we're okay to go on, Jeff?
Please.
Okay, just talk about the draft bylaw for the regional emergency management. I mean this, just help understand it a little better with all the acronyms and whatnot.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Okay, so. I must say it's a little bit of a brutal reading, that piece of legislation. So actually, I called Jill this morning early on and said, you know, if we had an organizational chart, it might be helpful. And JD, thanks so much because I really realize it's a very complex piece. And I believe it needs to be simplified somewhat. And I think with those terms that you have there, thank you for coming up with that. I think that will clarify the whole thing. But could you maybe go through that organizational chart and help us understand? Because honestly, I read the document three times and still wonder what the heck I was reading. Because I needed a reference to all those acronyms.
Yeah, for sure, Mayor, of course. So first of all, we're bringing the bylaw to you now because it was just reviewed by the Legislative Department in Alberta Emergency Management. And so we've been working on it through Mark Murphy, the consultant. And at this stage, Alberta Emergency Management has said that it is compliant with the legislation. And so it meets all of those things. But definitely, it is a mouthful and there are a lot of different acronyms there and they bounce around a lot. So I appreciate that confusion. And we are going to, as we work forward in the next few meetings with the consultant, as well as with their partner municipalities, to try and, you know, adjust the acronyms and the languages so it does read a little bit easier. But to go through the bylaw, essentially what it does is it establishes Cardston as a member in the regional partnership. And so, you know, as it stands now, the partnership is the Cardston County Regional Emergency Management Partnership. And basically, what's that saying is the county, as well as the municipalities, McGrath, Cardston, Hillspringe, and Glenwood are all forming a partnership for emergency management. Now, the Act requires that a municipality has a committee over emergency management. And through this partnership, we're going to be able to have a regional committee. So the committee is going to be a regional committee for the whole region with all the partners. And Cardston will need to send one elected official to be a voting member on that committee. And the bylaw also allows for an alternate to take that person's place if they're not able to. The role of the committee is to provide the elected official oversight to the emergency management program in the region, to provide that political governance and to make sure that the will of council is being done in regards to emergency management. And so the next step in the partnership, in the arrangement, is the agency. And technically, as it stands now, the Cardston County Regional Emergency Management Agency. And the agency is the action body or where the things actually happen. And so the agency is made up voting members of the CAOs of each of the municipalities and the regional director of emergency management. So because we are going through a regional partnership, we'll have a regional DEM or Director of Emergency Management. And that's where the real benefit to this initiative comes in. The regional, the RDEM, is the one responsible for the agency. And they're the ones that manage the plan, organize the training, make sure that everybody is coordinated, make sure that the coordination center is functioning. They're the ones that engage with regional emergencies. And that role takes a tremendous burden off of the CAOs in each of the municipalities because all of those duties are legislatively required by each municipality, each state, CAO. So Jeff has been doing all of those things. And not all of those will pass to this regional DEM and will be done in the agency. And the plan will be for the region, so it will leverage the assets and resources from each of the municipalities.
JD, there's one more person that is not there and I don't really know where exactly, or even if it should be there, but is a deputy, the deputy for the RDEM, RDEM, whatever you call them.
Right.
So how is that person? How does it exist? Does it exist by vote?
You're talking about the deputy DEM for the region?
Right. How does it come to be? Is it a committee that elects him or vote or what is it?
Is he employed? That's the thing I have. Is he a paid employee?
All right, so before your question, Mayor, yes, the RDEM is a paid person.
Is it a full-time job?
No, it's not. It's not a full-time job. And the partnership right now is exploring the best way to staff and fund that position. It's not something that has been, that a person hasn't been identified for. And as far as the deputy to that person, the deputy DEM there, right now, there isn't a deputy for that position. The legislation still requires that each municipality have their own Director of Emergency Management, so their own DEM. So Jeff will still be the DEM as well as all of the others.
That's what I wanted.
And the bylaw stipulates that the CAO is required to be the DEM for the municipality. So in the instance that the RDEM or the regional DEM isn't able to fulfill the duties for whatever reason, then one of the CAOs would step into that position.
Right. Can I maybe add something to the comment you made to Councilor Barnes? Councilor Barnes, the idea of that position came from a meeting between the partners, all the municipalities. And we had, it was only the mayors that were invited because of COVID and the CAOs were there. And that is when that model was explored. So yes, each partner will have a portion of the cost for that person. But there is also other duty that that person might fulfill, that might benefit each partnership.
Well, another question I have then, what are the qualifications that have this regional DEM?
Right, they're working on that too.
That's what we need to know. Like, is he a fire chief or is he an EMS guy or, you know?
All that was.
All of the above?
All that was kind of explored and I don't really think there is a perfect definition of right. Maybe JD can speak about that.
I could just add to that. The position of the RDEM, as you're bringing up, Councilor Barnes, is very important and kind of pivotal for the whole partnership to function properly. There is, and I should invite, I have it on my laptop, there's quite a list of qualifications and requirements. We are preparing a job advertisement for that. But it's a demanding position. And so you want someone with lots of experience and there's lots of training that the person needs to have. And so I believe they'll have that first. And it is a demanding and kind of the crux of the whole partnership.
To bring up another question, if it's that demanding of a position, indeed that person that needs to be that qualified, how could that be a part-time job? And who do you find that's willing to put that much time and effort, that much responsibility into a part-time position? I don't get it.
You bring up, if I may, you bring up a great point. And that's one of the real benefits towards our approach by engaging with Murphy Consulting, Murphy Emergency Management Consulting for this. He's doing the bulk of the work. So he is organizing our emergency management plan, creating all of the training roadmaps into the future and doing, and getting all the bylaws in all of the municipalities, set the partnership agreement, establishing all of the framework. So when someone is brought in, it will be on a maintenance of the program and not of a creation to the program. So in large municipalities, you know, in Calgary and Edmonton and Lethbridge, there is a full-time, high-salary position for this type of a role. But it's expected to be only a three to four hundred hour per year, which is about the point, the three to four hundred hour per year position to actually make sure the training is being done and to schedule the exercises and this and that. And so we haven't formulated the budget completely yet with the partnership. But it looks like it's going to be something that is going to be very cost-effective for the group. And we'll be able to get, we haven't put out an advertisement yet though, so we aren't sure who's going to be able to apply to this. But within the group, the CAOs had people in mind that they felt like would be able to do the role quite well. So Counselor, so I have a question.
So just a couple of clarifications here. It's my understanding that this was going to replace all of the emergency services in McGrath and Cardston. We would no longer have those committees. This would replace those. And that those respective agents, those respective talents would keep the money that they have and that they would keep their fire chiefs. So. Just to be clear, that means that the money that we have in the bank stays with the ones who raised it and McGrath has in the bank.
Right. So to my understanding, Counselor, at the onset, that was the plan. However, there were some things at the, in the negotiations that prevented the company and all the municipalities from proceeding with that emergency services model. And what was decided was that there would be a break-off between the fire aspect and the work that would be done with the emergency services and fire and with the emergency management aspect. And so with, in our emergency, like as presented in this bylaw, it doesn't affect any of the emergency fire services. But there is a, we are in the process of trying to engage with the consultants to do that work as well, which is what I believe you're referring to.
So just to be clear here, so Cardston County Emergency Services should probably be changed to Cardston County Fire Services in the McGrath, but on there, Fire Services. Those that operate in separate and distinct areas and this is further emergency management.
We're hoping to, yeah, we're hoping to achieve that. And that when we engage with the fire consultant, they will be able to give us the recommendations and kind of the roadmap of how we can move forward on that front. So we're ready to go with this Zoom. Have we got our answer to this? We're going to try and.
No, I think it's fine. And the Murphy Agency or whoever you're working with would be well to insert that as an annex somewhere in the document for ease of reading.
All right.
Thank you.
Shannon should be able to hear you, so if you.
Okay, Shannon, it's Peter Drew just chairing the meeting. How are you?
You're muted, Shannon.
Hello, I'm here. Hi.
Can you hear us okay, Shannon?
I can.
Okay, good.
So we'll just get right to your presentation if you want to go ahead with that, Shannon?
Okay, tell me if you can see my screen and, oh, it says disable.
I gotta let you share too, all kinds of things. Okay, you should be good.
Okay. Perfect. Second. Okay, can you see that?
Yeah.
Perfect. All right. Well, thank you very much for giving me some time tonight. I can't imagine how busy you are with COVID and everything else. And I also wanted to pass my condolences for Bart Atwood. I was really sad to hear about his passing. I knew him from some of the water meetings over the years. And I'm very sorry to, for your loss.
Thank you.
So I'll just dive in and go through everything and I'll try to answer your questions. Please stop me if needed, that's totally fine. And obviously, I want to thank you first for your support. I know you've been very loyal donors over the years and I think going on fifteen years now. So thank you so much. And I did want to give you a good idea of how we're using the funds. So the unrestricted donations that we get from our municipalities and irrigation districts and individuals are basically what we use to kind of launch our grant applications. For most grants, you need kind of matching funds. You need to show that you have community support. And so that really helps us get these larger grants from government and foundations and corporations. And so it's really a great way that we can leverage our donation into many more dollars and then we can give those back to the community in, through our different projects. And also, a lot of time, these grants come in at different times of the year. There's gaps where we're waiting to hear back from people. And so those donations really keep us going while we're waiting. And also, some grant funders won't cover certain things. And so it really helps us just kind of fill those gaps. So that's, those donations are very important to us. And we do get a lot of support from our municipalities and we always have over the years. And as you can see, these are, these are all the donations that we've had. And just want to thank you for that. As, as you know, we cover quite a large area. This is all the land that eventually drains into the Old Man River through the tributaries. So it's quite large and we, you know, have a lot going on. So our projects are really a result of prioritization with our communities. We really try to listen to our communities and that's what watershed planning and advisory councils are all about. There's eleven across Alberta. We just covered the Old Man and there's one for each major river. And our whole purpose is to bring people together from all sectors to work on watershed challenges. And really, the key is that together part. It's a collaborative effort. And that's why we have nineteen seats on our board. We have one seat kind of for each sector. So there's one for health, one for municipalities, for towns and villages. And right now, it's Blair Painter from Colesness Pass and he's elected through Mayor's and Reeves. And there's one for the federal government, provincial government, First Nations, you name it. So we have all these sectors on our board to make sure that we're really representing the community. A lot of what we're doing right now is working on the coal mining file. As I'm sure you know, it's been quite contentious. And so we're doing our best to just share information. And because we are a forum for all voices, we think it's really important that there's like a non-political voice out there that's sharing scientific facts and, you know, neutral as possible, sharing stakeholder concerns and views. And we're really doing our best to kind of walk that line because people are, you know, hearing a lot from both sides and they really want to know, well, what are the actual facts and, you know, what does this mean? What does that mean? So we're doing our best to do that. And we have been submitting information to regulators. We participated in the joint review panel for the Grassie Mountain Project. And we've been very clear all along that we acknowledge there are positive and negative impacts. And we've been suggesting some areas that could use more monitoring or that need more piloting or scientific research. And basically, just encouraging everyone to share their views with elected officials. Quite a few people have had calls saying, well, you know, can you stop the mine? Or can you approve the mine? And obviously, that's not the case. The only people that have that ability are the regulators and the federal and provincial governments. So we're just encouraging everyone to share their own views. But one of our top concerns that we're hearing about and that we've found in the scientific literature is the issue of selenium. Basically, it's a problem because there's not an easy way to treat it. There are some treatment processes underway that look really promising, like tech has found a way to get about ninety-five percent removal. But it just hasn't been going on for a long period of time. So it's not like super, you know, proven and been happening for decades. And so there is that concern that, well, what if it doesn't work after a year, two years, or three years? And there's already like two mines being proposed that could be approved this year and could actually start construction next year. And then there's a whole bunch more that are exploring that haven't even been proposed yet but are looking at it. So, you know, we're looking at two, maybe, maybe more mines in the area around Colesness Pass. So we're just suggesting, you know, what more research needs to be done to make sure that our water isn't contaminated and that municipalities, you know, they need to be able to treat the water and selenium is not something they can treat for. And agriculture, of course, too, is very concerned. So there's kind of a big list here of questions and concerns that we've been hearing about. And I'm not going to go through them all. But suffice to say, you know, we've been providing information about these and, you know, what could be mitigated, what would need to be avoided, making recommendations to government. And we're waiting to hear, September is probably the earliest that we'll get a decision on the Grassie Mountain Mine. And probably is similar for the Tent Mountain Mine. Sort of related to the coal mines, but not just about that. The government is proposing changes to the water allocation order for the Old Man. And this order was last revised in two thousand and three. It basically sets aside eleven thousand acre feet of water primarily for irrigation, but also there was some limited use for other types of use. But it's not being used. There's still a large amount of it available. And so the government is proposing to remove the sector-specific limits on use and just have like one amount for anybody to apply for. And so this could actually have like pretty serious ramifications. And so we're making recommendations just around how to kind of limit those and make sure that the rivers are protected and the other water users are protected. And one thing that's, we know from science is that if you start removing more than fifteen percent of a river's natural flow, there starts to be impacts after that. And also, if you start transferring water around, like upstream, downstream, to another river, that can have impacts. And it also impacts the like water transfer market that we have. And so this is only just starting to kind of get out there. The government is doing just initial consultations and we're encouraging them to do broader consultations because it does have pretty far-reaching consequences if it's not done carefully. So we've been talking to Roger Reed about that and he's kind of been doing these initial consultations. Municipalities have been pretty interested in this, even the city of Calgary has been calling. So everyone kind of wants water and when they hear there's some water somewhere, they want it. So this is probably going to become more of an issue over the next few months. So getting down to some of our other projects. We've still been doing a lot of streambank restoration projects out in the headwaters. And we do a few every year. We have to do them in the fall once the willows go dormant. So you do as much as you can kind of thing before it snows too much and you can't get out anymore. And I've highlighted our funders throughout the presentation to thank them and recognize them and to give you a sense of where we're able to leverage your dollars. We do garbage cleanups. This is one that we did at the Atlas Staging Area with the Quad Squad a couple of years ago. We're doing a lot of kind of on-the-ground education out in the, out at campgrounds and recreation areas. We set up these education stations near day-use areas or outhouses is a good place. And we just talk to people, we do activities with them. And then we ask them to kind of pledge to do an action. And then they hold up these boards that say, for the love of, you know, camping or, I will, they say, they put like, clean up my garbage or whatever the have you. And we helped them with that and we put it on social media. Because the research has shown that if you pledge to do an action, you're much more likely to actually follow through and do it. So that's a great way to get families involved. We also have a new project with our indigenous partnerships. We've been working a lot more with Kinnai and Pukani nations to support riparian range health assessments primarily. So they're figuring out how healthy their grasslands are or their wetlands and their streams. And then there's a big grassland restoration project happening. And they're actually going to be bringing back the buffalo. And so they want to make sure the grassland's really healthy to support those buffalo. And then we also did some training together recently. We're doing some monitoring of water quality and stream health through aquatic convergence. One of our rural programs is the Watershed Legacy Program. And we've been doing this for the last ten years or so. And mostly what we support through this program is riparian fencing projects, upstream watering troughs to get livestock away from creeks, garbage cleanups, weed poles, things of that nature. And anyone can apply, but typically, it is people with land that can apply, but municipalities can apply as well. And, you know, if you wanted to do an event or an educational activity or restoration project within your town, you can certainly do that as well. And that this program is primarily funded by our rural donors, the rural MDs, counties, and irrigation districts. Um, the youth education side, um that's been a bit difficult with COVID because um we can't go into schools, obviously. Um, but we've been trying to do virtual presentations instead. And we're we actually just got a grant from the R B C Foundation to create a virtual reality game that we can do with with um youth and families. So that that should help um kind of get through this COVID period. And it's it's still lots of fun, you know, people really like video games and things like that. So it's just another tool in our toolbox. Um, and then this year we also had two new projects. Uh, so the first one is called Uniting Rural Producers and Urban Consumers. And really what it's about is getting rural and urban people to work together and build trust so that we can um take on some larger projects together. Because we're starting to see a bit of a divide and we don't want to see that. Um, we want our community to be united and willing and able and comfortable working together. And so um this project's going to help with that. We started with just some audience research, doing surveys and focus groups. And and then this coming fiscal year, starting April first, we're going to be doing um interviews with producers and getting um urban and rural people together um at at local restaurants uh and or maybe outside, outside spaced apart, we're not sure yet. But the idea was to kind of showcase local food, local restaurants and local producers and how we all depend on each other. Um, and the other project we started this year is monitoring water quality and and stream health using um the invertebrates, the bugs that live on the bottom of streams. And this is lots of fun for us because we get to do fieldwork um in the fall. And the bugs are like pretty huge in the fall. We've seen some that were like about that big. They're pretty gross in some ways and pretty cool in other ways. And um, we send them off to a taxonomist to like figure out what kind of species they are. And then we can tell from the species and the amount um and from their DNA as well. They put them in a blender and they they figure out their DNA. Yeah, it's not fun for them. Unfortunately, they die. But um, um. And from that we can tell like if there's this. Yeah, bug smoothies, yeah, unfortunately. But um, we uh. We can tell from that if there's one species, then that means, you know, the water might be, something might be happening with it. If it's more of the other species, it means something else. And so that's really important information and it's kind of the gold, one of the gold standards of of stream monitoring. So really excited about that. And um, we did the seven sites last fall. And um, we just got some new funding this year, so we'll be able to do a whole bunch more this year. Um, and then we'll be able to share that information. And also it helps us evaluate if our restoration projects that we've done on the streams are actually working. Um, just a reminder to keep in touch. Um, hopefully you've renewed your membership lately. We've changed it so now it automatically renews. Um, so if you haven't lately, please sign up. Um, having those memberships, it should just show our funders that, you know, we have broad community support and that's really important. Um, we also have our newsletter. We send out latest info about, you know, coal mines or bugs or smoothies. Bug smoothies. Um, we share cool pictures of the creepy bugs that we find. Um, and we're on all the social media channels as well, so you can check us out there. Um, otherwise, I'm happy to answer your questions. And um, you can enjoy this beautiful picture of where the Old Man and the Bull River meet.
Thank you, Shannon. That was great. Any questions at all from council? Council.
So Shannon, what's the position of the Old Man Watershed Council on additional reservoirs on rivers and tributaries for the benefit of irrigation and communities?
So we generally don't take positions, like we. Our role is more to facilitate collaboration and science. So what we what we do when there's any sort of issue is we say, okay, what's this the science telling us? Is the like potential impact here? What do we know we need to do to protect other stakeholders or um the river, the watershed? And then we can share that advice with decision-makers. And generally, it's the provincial government, sometimes the federal government, municipality. Um, and then we we send them um like pretty detailed le- letters and information outlining um what the potential impacts could be, what our stakeholders are concerned about. Um, what um kind of more research might be needed, um that sort of thing. We don't generally say like it should or shouldn't be approved or rejected. We just kind of give them all the information that we can to make an informed decision and also a decision that we think the community wants. Like, that's why we think it's so important to share stakeholder views. Uh, and unlike not just on one side, but on all sides. Um, because we're also a vo- a voice for the local community. So we need to make sure we're sharing all views in a non-judgmental way. So, yeah, we, that's kind of what we do and um. It's really important as well because governments, and you know this better than me, that, you know, it's not easy to make these decisions. It's not something that is generally taken lightly. And so um, you know, we kind of try to make sure there's a good process in place that involves community input. And then we kind of trust the process and participate in the process.
Counselor Self, can I have a follow-up question from Shannon? So I assume that you watershed councils all work together, like you with the Milk River Watershed Council. I'll put that in context. We have colleagues to the east of us who have concerns about their water supply and have been looking for years to put some type of reservoir in the help rivers so they can have a consistent water supply. So do you guys support that watershed council and their endeavors to see something like that happen?
Um, it it depends on the topic. Like, we certainly do work together on on different things like um, um. Often the government asks us for our advice or feedback on something. Um, so in in that way, it's sometimes it's a lot easier if we just do like a provincial feedback. Um, but on something really specific, like the example you gave, we haven't been directly involved in that. We haven't been asked to be involved in that. Um, maybe if if the solution was like a pipeline from our watershed to theirs, then we would probably get involved. Um, but so far we haven't. But we do work together on like youth education. We're actually looking at um like having one um youth educator for the whole south region. Um. So yeah, it just depends on the issue. But on that one, not, we haven't been so far.
So if they were to approach you and ask you for a word of support, would you consider it?
We would, for sure. We we take all requests very seriously. Like, I caught, would get a lot of calls just from regular citizens. And I always call them back and explain what's happening and help them out and help them understand. Um, we generally, like I said, wouldn't necessarily say we support or or don't support something. We would just say like, you know, these are the potential impacts. These are these are areas where we need more information or research. Um, these are the benefits. These are the the um, you know, views of our stakeholders and we we leave it up to the decision-makers to decide. Elected decision-makers.
Any other questions?
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you so much. That was great.
Oh, good. I I I can't see your face, so I can't tell if you're asleep or what, but I uh.
We're not asleep.
Good. Wonderful.
Lovely picture.
It is.
Thank you. Well, I can hear Maggie somewhere in there, but um, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, have a good night.
Thank you.
Bye.
Bye.
Sounds good, right? Okay, that'll that'll go for a while too. Okay, let's um, we've talked about the draft bylaw. We're all good with that. Thanks, J D put up. So let's move on to other business. So recreation facility and the survey. Do you want to touch on that?
Uh, so in your packages, counsel, uh you saw two documents on this. Uh, we tried to take that feedback from last meeting. Um, J D did up a kind of instructional page that would go door to door to say, this is what we're looking for. Here's your code, which would be unique for each user. And and then we still got to get the URL and all that settled. It's obviously generic. And then electronically would be the the survey, which you see below. Um, we put on the initial document that we know there's a number of people who may not be comfortable doing a survey online. So if they'll phone us, then we'll either block it through them over the phone, we can input it right there on the spot. Or we could deliver them a hard copy and go pick it up again, because we think that would be a pretty small number. But that's something we could offer them. We we're still hesitant about going door to door as far as interacting with every single person door to door at this point. So we're just looking for feedback on the appropriateness of the questions now, the appropriateness of the approach, um and anything like that from the council.
Um. I appreciate the work that has been done on this document. Thank you. I especially appreciate the open, uh, ended question on Q three. Because of that question, which I feel should be able to give us a better sense of what people would like in that indoor recreation. I am wondering if it is then wise to have a listing of the activities? Because the reason I say in the preamble, the reason I say that is because then it's leading people rather than have them pick from what they really want they're going to pick from that. Possibly from that listing. And I really think if we really want a need assessment done, I think the question on Q three will give us a better sense what people really would use that facility for and could be built to their, to represent their 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 want. Rather than us telling them what's going to happen inside there. I think it's a little bit the same story when we uh possibly made um, a faux pas possibly with the with a school board when we told them what they needed. And really, in their retrospect and listening to the comment back, they didn't appreciate. And so I'm wondering if we're not doing the same thing by listing all those activities, just a thought for us to consider.
So council court and then council.
Yeah, I just, you know, the minor thing on question two. If there was an indoor recreation center in town, would you, your family supported by paying a user fee for each activity you would use? I'd like to see that a little bit more general. Basically, would your family support by paying a user fee for the facility? When I read that, it looks like it's every time they go in there, they're going to be asked for a dollar. Well, they could be paying a lot of costs with a family pass or whatever. So I'd like to do a little more generic, not quite so specific to each activity. Just a minor thing.
Counselor.
Um, so I think it is really important to put in the preamble. I like the way it's written, that has a list of things that could possibly. It's not saying you for sure are building it, but it's giving a list of things that could possibly build a rec center. For example, my mom wouldn't know what to ask for because she wouldn't, she hasn't been to enough rec centers to know what the possibilities are. So we're not, we're not saying A, B, and C. We're just saying the possibilities of what could be a rec center. So I I think it is important for people to understand that we're not just building a pickleball facility. We're not just building a basketball, that it's a rec center and and what that actually looks like. So I I do think it's important.
But it begs again the question, do we know what the people want? We know that a rec facility is something that if we're able to afford it, this council seems to be supportive of of such idea from what I gathered over the months. But I still do not feel that the community has told us what they want. We know what we could offer them, but we don't know if it meets their wants. And so that's why. A need assessment normally is what is done prior to going with any sort of thing to decide is there a need or is that a want? And do people understand really what the impact is overall? So I appreciate your your uh desire to see that, but to me, it's leading. Uh, last time Counselor Barnes talked about not leading the people, and I think that's leading. So it's a survey. I appreciate uh the intent. But if we don't want it leading, then we should not have that, in my opinion. And I'd like to know what others around the table feel like.
Counselor Self.
I agree with Council Brown. I like the idea of having some suggestions in the preamble. I think mayor, with respect to your concerns, that's what question three is all about. They want to have other activities they want to see in there. That's their opportunity to voice their.
No, it's it's fair. It's just my take on it, right?
I I agree with both of you that, you know, like I like the way that is. I think people need to understand these are things that could be in.
The impact of it.
Right. And then question number three would be, if I want to do whatever else, I can put that in there and we can take that information.
So if I understand, Barry, you don't want them listing any activities in the preamble, is that correct?
Yeah, uh, I think. You know, at one point I even thought, would it be best to put in Q three as a table with all activities I could tick, what I would be using?
Well, I think you're.
Possibly.
I think it's kind of aspirin of all type purposes surveys to order the desired type. This is what do you want? These other things, we know that's probably what it's going to be used for, all these other things. But there's outside of that, there could be other considerations depending what they want. And I think that's what Counselor Self said. Now question three would kind of answer that question.
Well, fair enough. It's just an opinion.
Right.
Just some context, we were debating over this too. And you know, every word is so carefully scrutinized on these things. Uh, first to your point on the any activities you use, and again, it's minor, I'm indifferent either way. I'll tell you why we worded it that way. We were looking at, with a facility like this, is it a facility that lends itself to a membership? Or is it a facility that lends itself for, you pay for the time slot of the activity you're participating in? We likened it a bit to the ice rink. You don't buy a membership to the ice rink. I pay for my Monday night at nine thirty slot for forty and over hockey. And then I can also pay for Wednesday night hockey with that younger group, should I choose. And so we were just looking like, and again, it it's small enough, council, I don't think it would be a big deal. I just want to give you some context. So we're trying to envision what the fee structure for such a facility would be like. Whether you would be à la carte the activities you wished for or buying, we're not sure what we're selling with the membership. Right? That that's a very, it's still ambiguous what that would look, what would you get with it? Anything that ever goes on, I'm not sure that's totally appropriate. So yeah, that that's why we did it that way, but but it's not a big deal. And then to the mayor's point on question three, we debated and talked about a list where you could put a a tick mark in everyone that was interested, but we worried about a couple of things. One is, was our list exhaustive? We don't know. And we were sure if we did that, we definitely wouldn't get any suggestions above and beyond the list.
Right, yeah.
That was our other concern. We thought if we just leave a blank, then everyone can put in whatever's on their mind. But as soon as we put it within the question, we thought we were really going to narrow down the feedback we would get. So just some, just some context from us.
I mean, this is what I said. I like the open-ended question. I I really do. I mean, this is what I said. I like the open-ended question. I really do.
No, I understand where you're coming from, Jeff. That's good. I guess it, we'll find out later on what kind of structure we can put in there. I think this is all we can talk about. Whether it be a general user fee for the whole year or individuals, like you were saying.
Yeah.
You go in there for an hour, you pay this much money for it. So I, I get it. I can leave it the way it is. That's fine with me too.
How about a balance for both of you?
You got the good, good wording.
For each activity, just say the activities.
Oh, for the activities?
For the activities you would be up.
Instead of each activity, you.
I like that better.
So it's not like we're gonna squeeze a dime out of you every time you set foot in the building, right?
Fair enough. And like I said, if that one's small enough, it's not a hill, I'm gonna die on that. So, but yeah, good suggestion.
Right.
We'll find out. Yep.
The, the sentence there proposed that the center would be general use, open gym building that has a capacity. I think rather than it has a capacity, you could put in something like there could be these types of activities. And I like that they're listed here. And then in the preamble, there will be questions. And if you want to add to this list, then you've got question three in there that they could answer that way. But I think that, yeah, many buildings have capacity to do things, but I think that maybe you could put in there that this type of building could be used for these different activities. Are these something that you're interested in or are they more?
I see what you're saying. So instead of would be, could be. Yeah, maybe there would be a.
That's less leading?
Yeah. It's less leading. Could be. And it's in a third sen, it's in a, in a second sentence.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah. I mean, it could be for use for conferences too.
And I appreciate that. If we could compromise on that, I would appreciate that. Because would mean is already decided.
Yeah.
Okay, so maybe that's what I was trying. Thank you.
So other than wordsmithing, we're okay with this?
Yeah, fine. Yeah.
We'll move on then.
Can I? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
No, I was just gonna say thank you because I like it. I think, I read through it and I honestly, I mean, mayor, absolutely not a problem changing that one word. It is nobody's intent that's sitting at this table to lead anybody. That's why we're doing the survey. So I just wanted to say thank you to all the hands on deck that helped with it because I think it's great.
Okay. The surveys are a funny monster, right? Because you scrutinize every single little word and, and it can just be paralysis by analysis at some point. I just wanted to mention, and I, I don't wanna open up the whole can of worms here. We were having some discussion about a survey that was very similar with a couple of questions to it that went to all of the bricks and mortar businesses. Because some of that feedback could be subtly different. So maybe there's a question of, do you feel this type of facility would have impact on your business? And you get some of those things. We, we didn't have a chance to mock it up. And that's a much smaller, like for us to execute that, we're not at thirteen hundred, we're at a hundred, right? So that would be a very quick turnaround if we did it. I just wanted to throw that out there to see if there was interest or you have a number of letters in your packet. I just got some, a letter today from the chamber that I haven't, I didn't get it in fact. It'll be next week. So you are gonna get some feedback from the business community through other means. We were just talking about, is there something we would do that, it wouldn't be exactly the same because it doesn't work exactly the same, but it, it's something we could deliver to each bricks and mortar store.
I hate to say this, but I'm working. In the town of Carstens, there's a lot of theme colors. And in that preamble, it only states that we're gonna spend roughly a million dollars of town taxpayers' money. It doesn't give you the size of the building or anything like that. And people in this town, trust me, the older generation, such as myself, okay, if we got sixteen thousand square feet, a million dollars is not gonna build this building. We need to, we need to give some kind of an idea, the size of this building in that preamble so that they can put it in their mind what, what they're spending their money on and what we're spending their money on. I mean, just, we're, we're building, we're proposing a rec center, but we haven't given the size of the building or anything like that so that they can say, well, I, I like this idea, but, but man, can we afford it because of the size and so forth.
So mayor and then councillor Cork.
That was a little bit of a concern I had too. But here is maybe the rationale behind that idea. The town is only committed for a million dollar. What is not listed here is that the town will also have to commit for the operational cost. That is true, is not written point blank there. But what is, is impact on taxes, right? Which will have to take care of the operational cost. So.
But question five, but question five, mayor, answers your.
That's for the operational. But under capital, the town has said there will be one million dollar cap. The rest will have to come from donation. Donation don't count. There's no incentive. Simple. No, no donation, no, no, I mean, really, when we looked at the project last time, no matter which way you cut it, the one point eight million dollar is underestimated still because we know the mechanical and the, and electrical and the free, the site, the site, we're still need more money inside there. We know that. And no matter which way you cut it, what is true is the one million dollar, that's what the town committed.
Yeah, I, I agree with what the mayor's saying. I'm also trying to block her, saying, but councillor Salk, it might come back.
And then councillor Barnes after councillor Salk. And we agree on the, I think as a whole, I like the way that administration has done this. The whole departed, the purpose of this survey is to learn the desire for this type of facilities to me. Full stop. End of story. Exclamation mark.
That's what I was thinking. This, as for councillor Salk, can you agree on that?
Councillor, maybe it's not going to satisfy you, huh?
It's not gonna satisfy me in the fact that if I don't know how big this building is, I'm not gonna propose that it can do some of the activities. I think we need to know the size of this building, roughly the size of this building, whether it be fifteen or eighteen or nineteen thousand, fifteen thousand. And that dictates what, what can be held in this building. And capacities and everything else dictates what can be held in this building.
Okay. The other concern I have here, since the council's considering spending a billion dollars to town funds for works of construction, there's nowhere in there an approximate cost that's actually gonna cost. And I know a lot of people will read that and think, oh, we're gonna have a rec center, it's gonna cost a million dollars? No, it's not gonna cost a million dollars. It's gonna be almost double that. And so somewhere in there, there needs to be a component in there that the proximal costs are going to be million dollars from the town and the rest through fundraising and donating. Somewhere that has to be in there, I think.
That would be okay with me.
It is in there.
I don't see it.
But it talks about funds towards construction, maybe possibly completed.
No, that doesn't, that doesn't cut it for most people. They're gonna see the million dollars.
I guess it for most people, but it works for me. And we talked about this last week. We're not going ahead until the survey's out there. We can beat it up again like we've done for the last six months. I see nothing wrong with this survey. People can think for themselves if they want it. They can read and say, oh, a million dollars plus whatever. And if you want councillor bank, we can throw that into preamble. We're considering building a recreation facility at sixty to eighteen thousand square feet. That makes you happy.
Okay.
That should have brought some of the cost up.
Yeah.
I just, again, a little administrative context because we had this same debate around our table and desk. One of the reasons why I'm a little bit hesitant to start putting square footage is let's say, just paint a scenario where we get going in six months from now, it looks like maybe the donation plot has dried up a little and we're at one point four. Let's just say, I'm just grabbing a number.
Yeah.
So maybe this ends up being ten thousand square feet with the high priority items, and it's not nineteen thousand square feet at all because we designed, built this thing with the money we had at the time. So I was just a little bit cautious to say, you know, it's nineteen thousand feet come hell or high water. Right? Because if we get down the road and, and the pickleball committee in the town is satisfied that we've kind of reached peak donation, then it's, then it's either okay, we're either, it's a no or no go, we make that decision at the time, or maybe this thing is eight thousand square feet. I don't know. That, that's just what is it now.
Because I feel like, I completely agree. Because when you start putting those kind of facts, we don't, those aren't nailed down, like you said. We don't know them exactly, so we can't say. And once we start putting down numbers, then I feel like if we don't do it, it's bait and switch. And I feel like then it's a whole nother basket. So I, I just feel the basic information is in here. We're not, I just, I feel like there's enough, we could, we could do ten pages on this. I mean, we could, just to make sure we're doing, you know, our due diligence. But I really feel like what's in here is honest and non-leading and giving the information that we know for now. We wanna know their thoughts.
That's what we, we wanna know.
That's right.
If we want this or not.
So I'm okay with the survey the way it is. I understand councillor Benbury's position. I was there. I modeled in my head also. The, the concern I have with a survey, as you would know, and I've said it zillion of times, is that it needs to be relevant and it needs to be able to tell us what the population in general thinks. My worry is from all of the surveys that ever have been done in this town is that or we will not reach a critical amount or we reach a three hundred return, but they are from all those who are absolutely behind the idea, and that's okay. But it will not tell us what others in the community will think because I have not taken the time to answer. And that unfortunately, what we saw was factored by survey. Of the thousand, the thousand, the thousand surveys that are sent out in a community that got sixty eight return. And that's my concern. I think this time we'll get more, but I'm afraid that it is not going to be representative as if we had done it at random. So I'm wondering, how do we as council reconcile that? What is the number, the percentage of return that will satisfy us to say, yeah, that does represent the, the population? Because I'm afraid that thirty percent is going to be also a hundred percent behind it. And I have no problem with that. Good for them for doing that, that survey. That's what I would be doing if I want something. But how do we are certain that we hear the voice of most households? Some, Jeff, maybe?
Councillor Cork.
I thought that's what this whole point was, that we're sending it out to the taxpayers, which is twelve hundred people.
But if they don't respond, what do you?
Then that's, what can we do about it? I mean, surveys were built that way. If they don't respond, to me, we told them we're looking for a rec center. If they don't like it or they don't respond to me, that's a tacit approval. If they don't like it, they'll let us know. We told right here that we're gonna build a rec center. Great. But if you don't like it, you better be telling us right now. Otherwise, we assume that's an approval from the forty percent that don't fill this out or whatever. I don't know how else we're gonna do this. We can't go door to door. So.
So whenever you put out a survey, you're, you're always taking a chance that that's gonna happen. You can't, you can't lead a, you can lead a horse to water, you can't pour the drink. It's this type of people, you cannot tell people, you have to fill out this survey or else. You know, we can't do that. It's, it wouldn't be fair. So you put it out there and we've done the best we can. That's the way I feel.
So it's no different than a government. People are complaining like crazy about the government right now. And my first question is, I hope you vote it. Because if you voted, I'll listen to you, right? So I feel like it's the same thing with this. We definitely can't go door to door. We would love to handhold every single senior, every single mom and tot and everybody so that we got four thousand or three thousand, seven hundred and whatever, how many we have in Carstens. That would be ideal, but we can't. We legitimately can't. So I, I feel like this going out to the taxpayers is open and honest.
And you need to advertise that this is out there. You know, you've got the, the Torres Channel TV station. And most of the seniors are all watching that. I, I, I hear them all the time. You know, but they got, they just watch that channel thirty-two judiciously. And as a reminder, when this goes out, you need to remind them on the TV station, this survey is coming out, please watch for it and please consider filling it out and getting it back to us because we need your input, councillor Salk. You know, I think that would help.
Would it help if we put one final question in here? And that is the, what, what is your age factor in your home? And that gives us a general idea of.
We, we debated trying to survey demographics as well. And you can do it. You certainly can. The question is, how big of a survey are you going for here, right? Because I appreciate what the mayor's saying about getting a good return and having a random. Our hope here was simply by giving it to everyone, you're going to get a random sampling. Because there's an assumption there, and it may be true and it may not, that we, let, let's say you want a thirty percent return to consider valid, just in your own minds. I'm not even talking statistically speaking. Just you feel good about thirty percent. Well, thirty percent of a hundred percent of households is likely to be a bigger number than thirty percent of the random sample we chose.
I agree with you.
Yeah. Right? And then we're just gonna have to trust that that represents a number of demographics. But I, I'm, I mean, it's certainly doable past the demographic information, councillor. It's certainly, the question is, are we doing a census or are we just trying to get this? You know, what's the object of it too, right?
Councillor Salk. So is this an appropriate time to talk about who the survey is going to? Is it going to the taxpayer of the residents or is it going to the resident? Because I think all of this has been a concern regarding taxpayers. I just wanna make sure that we're clear on where the survey goes.
Councillor Salk, I have the same question. I'm not talking to administration. That is a very interesting. Because to my point of view, the way it is set up right now, it would go to each household. So it could be a renter or it could be a taxpayer. But the renter is indirectly a taxpayer. So in other words, when we talk taxpayer, it could be direct or indirect. But we all pay tax no matter what, even a renter pays tax. So in, in that sense, I, I think, I think that's fair enough. Because imagine if we had a different system. Imagine if we had a Klebisa. You would have. You would have citizen in this town that would be direct taxpayer, property taxpayer. And you would have some that are renters that indirectly pay tax. So it would be the same kind of issue, wouldn't it?
Oh. On the one hand, Mayor, I agree with you. On the other hand, there are lots of people who own the property in town. This affects their pocketbook, but they don't live in town. So you have lots of those there. And so the reason I say taxpayer is because I'm talking about the ones who own the property. And they, literally, they have the skin in the game. They may pass whatever increases onto their interest, but they are the owner of the property. So they have the skin in the game with respect to the taxpayer.
Okay, I hear you. I understand your concern.
If I could just mention something logistically there, it's, we don't know which homes are under rented. What we, JD and I were talking about that too. I mean, that's tricky logistically because, but what we could ask, if that's important to you, and I would suggest there's good debate both ways on this, by the way. I think there is really good debate both ways. But as you know, in the preamble, it can say, you know, this is intended for the owner of the property. But you have a political issue there disregarding the opinions of the tenants too, right? Because everyone's actually voted for you previously and future, but I totally, I get the concept.
Yeah.
It's just a little logistically and politically tricky.
So this is our question. So if we're sending it out, it's my understanding it's going to the taxpayers. So business is on Main Street. So for example, you know, let's just say Joe Blow owns a business on Main Street, but he lives in the county. But he's going to get this because he's a business taxpayer, correct?
Right. It would go to the property in town, yes.
Yeah. So if he owns his store on Main Street, even though he doesn't live here, he still has property here and he pays taxes on that, he would get it, right?
Well, that would, that's a discussion.
No, I mean, that's my understanding. That's my understanding.
Because that person can't vote in the community, right?
Correct. And they complained about that. I know. I know. I mean, I have. But I'm just thinking, I personally.
We'd like them to have a say because they're taxpayers.
I agree with that.
I believe they shouldn't have a voice.
Yeah, so that's my thought.
The same would be true with those who have rental properties in town if they're renting out. Just to clarify, to have the memory, are we mailing this out?
We were going to deliver the sheet, that first sheet, we were going to deliver one and put it in every door. Because each sheet has a unique code.
Well, this could fix your problem there. We could have JD stand at the door until they actually fill it out.
We were trying to minimize our 1,300 home interaction during COVID.
So why, why, sorry, why would we, why are we dropping it off door to door? Why would we not just put it in their mailboxes? I thought that when we do taxes, we have their email or for sure we have their box number. So why would we risk JD or Joe Blow? Why would we risk, you know what I mean? I think that's dangerous for me. I'm not comfortable with that.
So two things is when we mail, the cost is quite a bit higher to do that, but that's a small part of it. The second is then, if you want to mail it to the same place it taxes go then, and if it's your decision, then it's not going to the tenant or the potential user anymore. It's going to the owners. And that could be in any community all over this fine country, right?
It can go to the states for that matter.
We talked about during the mailbox drop, but the problem is every county resident in the whole region has a mailbox in Carson too.
Yeah.
They can't, they can't say, we're just going to put it in the town lots. But you're right, we could send it to every address we have attached to property.
Yes.
But you are, you are making the decision to not get the feedback from the tenant. You may be getting feedback, you will be getting feedback from the owner, that's for sure. So that's one way we could look at that.
It's just, sorry if I can't, it's just a little with the COVID and restrictions. And I just feel like we could really get slammed for having a town person going door to door, dropping things off.
Again, we're not interacting with them in the door.
No, I know, but it's just, yeah, it just makes me a little nervous. Just because of COVID. I mean, normally I'd be all over it, but with all of these stupid wonderful things we got going on right now.
Maybe JD can take some of Sean's pepper spray with him.
That'll kill it.
Well, why don't we, why don't we give it a shot and allow him to try it? And if it doesn't work, well, we have to go plan B.
So are we, are we comfortable with what we have?
I think there is a question that we didn't answer, that's a question that Jeff was posing, which is, should every business in town have about a hundred and some that we have receive a survey that is modified or do we send them this survey?
I think everybody's got the same one.
So the only thing we talked about in this session, I keep opening up cans of worms I don't want to. I talked about this last mini-count herself. One of the, one of the challenges when you go to the commercial sector is assessments go way higher. I mean, we have businesses assessed in, you know, over $2 million, right? So when you have our question five grid of up to 200, that can be five grand for them. You know, that, so we have all of our houses pretty neatly captured within a few hundred thousand dollars. I mean, the vast majority would be between, within a few hundred grand. In the commercial sector, you go and then just to pick a few councillor's, you go from a small office like councillor Barnes to Blavlos or South Country and or Southwest Concrete or Torres Salt. And so you have seven-figure spread assessment now. So that question, we were looking at, would that need to be modified a little or just made really generic or? But it can still work, like the same idea, I mean, what if all your businesses, even those big ones, kept it under 200? That tells you something too.
Okay, so Jeff, then could it be possible that, that the Q5 stays open rather than with even an amount? To fund the year operation, how much of an increase in annual property would you support?
Just blank, fill in the blank.
Fill in the blank.
Maybe.
Maybe we could put in percentage of assessment.
Like I said, it just, we have a wide gap in the commercial. As I said, I'm opening a can of worms I didn't want to go down, Councillor Sun.
That's such a terror, right? That's not my suggestion. You said no.
You're exactly right. And I did veto it, and I did veto it for the good reason that general consumer that is not a businessman is more comfortable with this type of approach. A businessman 5%, they have a different way of looking at the world, that look at it through the world of figures. General population doesn't really look at the world through percentage. So.
Can we just say, if you have a problem with the percentage, well, the mayor should figure it out. Call this number a calculator increase.
Councillor Sun. I knew you would get me on that. And then you're there. But I mean, if we have to put numbers, the numbers could be 30,000 to 50,000 dollar at a high range. That's what 5% is for those people, 50,000 bucks a year. I mean, let's not fool ourselves.
I don't know if we ever get to that, Mayor. That's, you got a decimal place out of whack there.
If I.
Even if your assessment was a million.
Yeah.
You would have 10,000?
At a million, if it was 5%.
Right. 5,000, I have one zero.
This is why we don't have 2%.
Yeah, there's your, there's your proof.
Don't call there.
Just to rein this back in.
I raised my case.
Just to rein this back in for a minute, we do say in the final one, over $200 annual property tax. So we do say over.
Yeah.
So we're saying over, so we're not saying 50,000, but we're saying over 200. So I feel like because of the over, yeah, like, I feel like, I think this should be sent.
Figure it out.
You're right.
We can, we can keep it consistent.
Okay, all right. Anyway.
I just need to send it out to the, are we settled on, is this going to the property owner?
I don't know.
Can you please?
Thanks, I'm glad you don't know. I was waiting to ask, Councillor, because I'm not sure.
Yes.
I think everybody's, we need a resolution on this?
You can't hear, but we have it ready 100% ready for the next one.
You can do a recommendation.
Recommendation, Jeff, you guys are going to wordsmith this and make this council.
So I think with two tiny little tweaks, the wording is, I'm hoping that's to bed.
Yes.
And then unfortunately, we walked into this, it was just going to go door to door, but not anymore, maybe. So we do want some feedback on that.
I'd make a recommendation that we accept this survey with the appropriate tweaks that we talked about. And that it'll be sent out in the best fashion possible.
Okay, well.
As long as you tell me what the best fashion possible is.
We won't talk percentage, right?
Like we did that last part. As long as you're not using carrier pigeons, I can, no owls, no pigeons.
Okay, so why don't we carry on with the plan?
So you have a recommendation, Mr. Jeff, if you want to avail that first.
So, and are we taking that piece off?
We can take that last piece off the, yeah, just the first, that last sentence.
So any questions about that recommendation on paper?
So again, we got a couple of options. We mail to every tax address on record that's going to owners. Or we give a paper door to door, it's going to the tenant. The tenant's also your user, keep that in mind.
Yeah.
The other thing too is if we mail to the owner, you do have a contingent of care homes that no one there will be participating. Now, that might be fine, but that's, that's something to consider as well.
I was just wondering how long it would take if we went door to door, is my question.
I think we do it in an afternoon. Yeah, we'd probably put like four people on it and quadrant the town and where we'd go. We've done it before a number of times, we do like minor football to do a donation, something like that.
The thing is, we're all going to grocery stores and it's like, I got a lot more people one-on-one and you're only going to be handing it. That's my feeling. And you're going to be wearing your mask.
That'll fall without.
Sure.
So I don't have a problem with.
So it's going everywhere then, we're saying?
Every door.
I mean, nobody.
Okay, but what about those, the ones who own the property but don't let it out?
You can look into a senior's.
Can we do, is it possible that we, that we do both? Can we send it out to the emails?
The beta addresses, yeah. We don't have emails for a property.
So can we send it out? I realize it's more expensive by sending it out like you do for your taxes, like my tax bill in the mail. Could we not send it out in the taxpayers' in the mail and then blank it to town with them? Is that, are we double, are we doing too much?
Probably I would say 90% of your homes, you're going to get two potentially though.
Right.
Right? Because everyone, what we're trying to caution, because we've seen this on other much more casual surveys, but, and I've mentioned this before, we'll put out surveys and come in the morning and the same person has done it 30, 40 times.
Yes.
And so that's why each home gets a code that only is good ones. Now, I'm just thinking through that, Councillor.
I just want to have a.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We could, I'm not sure.
Okay. The problem is, we do not know who the renters are. We do not know which house sits idle and empty. So isn't it still best to go door to door and do the very best delivery we can? And hope for the best? That still will give us a fair return. That still will give us a fair return.
I'm trying to.
The only thing we could do is maybe ask if JD, after two weeks our week, could do a fast check to see if there are some of those envelopes still staying on the ground.
Get you in shape.
I mean, that could happen if the wind hasn't blown them in the bush.
But rather than have to have a survey then.
Right? That would be the only thing.
It would be important then, how to word this or how to place this, but it would have to be that the owners, if they want to have, because they have skin in the game and have to be, then you need to go to your rental property and get the survey off of your doorstep so that you have skin in the game.
One other thing, while there would be some redundancy, but you could control it, is if we put out that, so it was delivered door to door and we recognize that properties with, the owners of properties with tenants, we would also like, they could call in and we could give them a code to do the survey.
Yes.
There you go.
You can do that with businesses too, right?
Yeah, we can advertise and say, look, just call in. We take your address. So what address is that? Oh, okay, it's this one. And yeah, we can see on title that you own it. Fair enough. Here's, we're going to email you the code.
Yeah.
Good idea.
Go on and do the survey. Because, because I don't know how many that is, but I would bet we'd only get maybe a couple dozen of those who would actually call in and do it.
That's a good idea.
Good idea.
And I don't know if that level of redundancy bothers any of us, right? That the tenant and the owner on a couple dozen homes respond, I'm not sure that that's offensive.
I mean, both of them could be both as in a town for that matter.
Yeah, actually captures both of what we're talking about.
Okay. No, I don't see a big logistical problem with that. We could, yeah, we'll just advertise that.
So business owners could get this involved, even if they don't live in town, but they own the property.
Yeah, and I think, again, we're not running it like a plebisciter direction. So I think if we deliver a sheet to that business, I don't really care where they live to fill it out. It doesn't matter. That was the code that business got.
Okay.
And they can have whoever they want fill it out within the business, irrespective of where they live.
All right.
Okay?
Yeah, that sounds good.
All right, I'm getting, I think we're getting some direction here. We're doing good.
One more thing. Is that possible then, because if it's run, sent like that with no indication if it is a business, would that be then possible or would it be useful to us to know if it is a business answering the question? Where on the last line, you have over 200 annual property, choose one. If we had a little bit of another question, are you a business owner?
We might be able to, Shem can tell me this because he's looking into it. We might be able to control that through the access code.
Okay.
We might be able to say this series of codes were delivered to the businesses.
All right. So so long we have a way to tell.
When we check, because I agree, I think it's important that you can differentiate the business responses from the residential ones. I think that's a good thing.
We should.
So we will check to see if we can at the end of it say, okay, the last 100 codes were the commercial set.
Yeah.
For example.
So that's good.
That's what we'll do. We'll try that out.
Yeah. Do you need a recommendation?
Uh, no, I think, I think we're good. We'll bring a whole bunch of tidy little package to have this maybe potential same conversation.
Okay, so let's move on to other business B, fiber optics.
I think a motion take five minutes, right?
Jill just wanted to get food, so she should be back in two minutes.
Can we, I don't know, we're eating two minutes.
Can we maybe do a correspondence then?
Sure. No, we can do that. Let's go down to correspondence.
Then you do it very long.
Yeah.
So A in correspondence is the official training notice. Any questions about that piece?
Anybody who wants to register can register and we have money in our education account to do it. If you're interested in any of it.
The Reeve Greg Shaw check, I guess. Ramona, Shu check, service check, yeah. Does it suck you?
Yeah.
I have an agree with you on that one.
There is a little bit of an issue there with FCM. And I know we have representation from Alberta on that goal. The thing is, how much more vocal can there be than what I did last time? Bringing people, having the shirts and all that stuff. There is already quite a bit of lobbying, lobbying being done. I don't know that separating ourselves from what is the FCM is the answer really, personally. I think if the whole of FCM realizes that they need to support us with all causes, then I think that's more powerful than to go separate. then I think that's more powerful than to go separate. That's my opinion.
But that'd be the reason you want to go separate, because they're not recognizing that. He even says in Quebec City that we are insulted, genuine abomination, hostility in Western communities.
Wow, that's written that way, right? I mean, that's one person's perspective.
I'm not so sure, we've got to see how that's done, and it's done us any good.
We're doing correspondence, yeah, anyway, okay.
So what if we just take a straw poll of who would like to send a letter? We send it back to them and say, here's our research to the question. How do they just throw this in the garbage every month?
Well, I think it's an important topic. Can I suggest one thing? Would it be maybe more useful if we were to write FCM and try to tell them that the voice of the West need to be heard and need to be respected? Maybe if we go directly to them, do you know who the FCM rep is for Alberta?
I don't know.
I don't know.
I don't know who it is.
I don't think you have to answer these questions, either all affirmative or negative. I think they're just soliciting feedback if they're on their own here in this line of thought. So if you don't agree with one of them, then tell them, if you reply at all.
Well, we can all reply for that matter, really.
You wanna do it as counsel, or?
I think we can do individually, and then reply, try to get the person who is interested. If we talk about the next topic now, I like to share something that happened to me this week. I received a phone call, so that letter is to get a letter of support to loosen the restrictions for businesses, so essentially that's what it's all about. I received a phone call from MP Landmarks this week, I shared that with Jeff. And he was speaking on behalf, or passing along on behalf of one his constituent in Madison, huh, who owns multiple business, businesses. The concern that a businessperson has regarding the effect of the restriction on his businesses and livelihood. But he could not take a position, he just said that he would pass it on to all the mayors and council for them to discuss at their table. I think the letter that the MDR Spirit River wrote has something that is valuable at the end, which is we value a balanced approach to the situation. It's difficult to do anything else in the balanced approach. You need to protect, that's the role of all councils, is to protect people. But on the other hand, it's also to make sure the economy is not collapsing. So the balanced approach is a fair approach. So I pass that on to you.
So in the letter from Spirit, they make reference to Dr. Joffe's expensive analysis. And I think there's some merit to that, he's saying, too, it's difficult, but it's a reality as well. Continued lockdowns are probably having more harm than they are good. And there's a lot of rules happen, churches and restaurants, or people that are trying to make a living that can't.
The message really is that those, the most stringent the rules are going to be, the more people are going to try to break them because they're trying to keep their business alive. It's a tough one, you know, I mean, I don't envy anybody being in those shoes.
But to drag this up, it's also bothering me, then, forty miles, one case, that there'd be two like the bills and the bills. But Warner has four cases that there'd be two like the bills and the bills. This model being applied very fairly, and I agree with this guy here. We're being hurt by lockdown in the other cases if not necessary.
Excellent.
So I might suggest that we propose a recommendation that administration draft a letter for the mayor's signature that wordsmith this on the job.
I'm working on it. Tell me what you wanted to say.
A balanced approach.
That we agree that there needs to be some consideration for businesses and that the statement is correct, that lockdowns are far more harmful to human health than COVID-19 can be. My own.
Well, we need to also be careful, because in our town, we're starting to have a lot more issues that are maybe going to affect us, I hope not, but might be affecting us. So we're not exactly in a better position to say that we cannot protect lives.
But he makes the valid point in there, that we protect those that are the most susceptible and most vulnerable, and others get to go about their life.
Except, you know, when you really look at the statistics that they give, I did a little bit of math. And I'd say this is my 5%, better than my 5%.
Trust your mouth.
But what I found interesting is that in a population, interesting at least, eye opener. In a population between the age of 25 and 65, the people, the number of deaths in that population due to COVID is slightly inferior, in that whole population range, slightly inferior to 65 and over. And that was an eye opener to me, which tell me that the working population is being affected almost as much than on those who are retired. And that, I had no clue that it was that high. And I come from their statistics, I didn't make it up. So when you start to look at it from that perspective, it's a surprising thought. Because that attack, those who are in the workforce, and those who in the workforce are dying at the same rate almost as those who are over 65, and that's surprising to me.
I understood that the average life dying of COVID is 82. So how does that balance that?
I don't know.
Because that's the average.
You're asking in this study, but I find if I can share this, you.
Just finish up. Sorry. I think we should all take a look at our own families and see how this is affecting.
When you lose one person.
Family members are really, really struggling mentally, big, big, big time with this whole can't see the family thing and everything else that goes with it. So we need to look, what it's doing to our own families and make the decision that way. Um, my wife read me a letter, I don't remember the doctor's name, but he's done a lot of analysis. And he said that the number of deaths due to COVID are no more than the number of deaths without a COVID year, since they're almost identical. And so I don't know how factual that is, I'm not a doctor. All I'm seeing is, I think the most vulnerable, other than the seniors, I understand that, are families, that can't visit families. I could see us, you know, being careful about being in the general public amongst other people, having parties and stuff like we used to. But it's the families that are really being affected, they can't visit their kids, can't have them come in. And I know the depression rates are increased dramatically in our province. And suicides are on the rise, it's unprecedented, and it's all due to restrictions. And I don't know what we can do in our own community, but some are, we gotta look at some reason, a reasonable action. I don't know what the thing is, but boy, I sure wanna see my family. I can't tell you how many, every single person in this community I've talked to, they just want the family. They're not worried about their association with their friends and stuff. That is the most important thing.
So we have a recommendation. I just wanted to reiterate, Council, so I can capture this, and then I have a question. I recommend to draft a letter under the mayor's signature, supporting a balanced approach to COVID and requesting consideration for business and the negative impact of lockdown. Who's the audience? Is it the same audience of Reed's letter?
Actually, I would suggest we just post it.
Okay, they had a whole list of CCs on there. Okay.
I think maybe something to that effect, that it affects the mental health of people and the difficulty not having that contact with families. Especially in a community like ours, where most of the family is abroad, all away from the town for employment reasons or for, yeah, for living, because it's true. We export our children, and then we don't see them. So I think, I think maybe, maybe something to that effect.
So I put the negative effect on lockdowns, and I just started from my notes, both on business and families, mental health, that whole thing. And the audience is a trigger, so I'm trying to have the recommendations.
The thing I thought most concerning was Dr. Joffe refers to the fact this has on kids and adults and what they're dealing now, where they can introduce all the social programs they want in the future, but they won't fix the damage they're doing.
Well, a lot of young people are struggling mentally. I have, I have to leave, I don't disagree with that.
Jeff, you'll figure that out.
Okay.
I'll drop them.
As a parent with great ten students, tell Jeff from that, because he's struggling.
Very significant reference.
So all in favor? All in favor of that?
Quick question before we.
Oh, sorry, go ahead, I'll talk about it.
Can we just finish? Blessing to her.
Oh, hold on, the chair won't, it's still finishing.
So we just finished the last recreation letter? Or is that gonna take too long?
They're all identical, so just for your reference.
Basically saying that they're in support of this, right?
What do you think, sir?
Correct.
If you don't mind me making a doing thing, I would love to be able to read the name of the people and know if they were the owners of the business or not, or if they're just an employee. And I cannot decide that on the quarter of the matter.
I can probably tell you, I'm stalled.
Okay, well, I'm glad to do that.
Very nice, blessing of the food, somebody wanna make a motion to the jury?
Don't want a turn, please, recess.
A recess, I'm sorry, I mean, a later recess. So all in favor? Council Barnes.
We thought they were grateful for the afternoon, and thank you for the food that's been provided this night. We pray for a blessing on it, for doing our body's good, for strength and nourishment. And as we return to our meeting, it will be able to continue to process all the information and do it intelligently. It will be of benefit to our community, in the name of Jesus Christ, amen.
Actually, why am I pushing back here for a turn?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
But it sounds suspicious, you might fight this.
All right, we got here, Jill.